The June eleventh, twenty twenty one, St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is still being held remotely. It's not practical or imprudent at the time for the Planning Commissioner and its committees to meet in person. In light of the COVID nineteen health pandemic, the Planning Commission members will be present, will not be present at the regular location. And all members of the commission will attend the meeting by telephone or other electronic means. We will begin today's meeting by doing a roll call, Sonia.
Here.
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 Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Katner.
Here.
Mr. McMurtry.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Commissioner Presley.
Here, Sonia, we can hardly hear you, at least I can.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I know, I, okay, I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Said.
Here.
Commissioner Taggaya.
Here.
Mr. Thomas. And that's it, Commissioner Underwood, Commissioner Yang, Commissioner Rinsberg, and Commissioner DeJoy are excused today. And of course, the Chair, we know you're here.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the next item of the agenda. I don't have any updates moving on to Director Pareda. Luis, do you have any updates for the commission?
Good morning, yes, Chair, and good morning, Commissioners and members and staff members of the public. Just a couple of quick updates. You may have been following this a bit at the City Council, but this, this week, the council had a public hearing to repeal the tenant protection ordinance. And actually, they continued that public hearing to June sixteenth. There's been some media about this, but there's been an order to halt enforcement of the ordinance. And even though the commission, you know, isn't involved with, with this ordinance, we did have a informational presentation on it. I believe last year at the request of at least one of the Commissioners. Just given, you know, how it impacts tenants and in St. Paul. Just wanted, I don't know really much about this, other than the council resolution says, just to highlight a couple of things of interest. In light of the order, the City Council finds it necessary and reasonable to repeal the chapter related to tenant protections in order to reassess legislative opportunities and strengthen the city's resolve to eliminate rental housing discrimination and ensure access to housing for all St. Paul residents. And the resolution also notes that repealing that section, that chapter does not mean St. Paul residents are, who are victims of rental housing discrimination are without recourse as federal and state laws, including the Minnesota Human Rights Act, remain in effect to prohibit such discrimination. So I actually didn't hear the council conversation this week, but I'd encourage you, if you're interested in this, to go back and listen to the, to the video. I'm sure that there was more discussed, and I think the public hearing is continued to next week, if you're interested in tuning into that. The second item, I've mentioned recently, sort of the transition back to in-person meetings. The Council, the City Council did act to establish an expectation for us, in-person meetings scheduled starting in September. Looking at that a little more closely, it doesn't say this, but I presume the mayoral emergency order would be going away as part of that, but I'm sure that's not a hundred percent decided yet. Why that's important is because the same sort of rules that apply to the council applies to boards and commissions. So I had the city, we've had the City Attorney's Office begin to weigh in, look at this a little more closely, advising about the open meetings law. You know, how does that, you know, impact us? And what are we able to do in terms of continuing some remote option for, for members of the public and or Commissioners? The City Attorney's Office weighed in that the open meetings law does allow for meetings via interactive television, which you can read as virtual meetings, but only under a limited set of conditions. And the two are, a Commissioner has an active military deployment, one, or, and this is the, the squishy one, sort of, or that they've been advised by a healthcare professional against being in a public place for personal or family medical reasons, and there is a current peacetime emergency in effect. So presuming that peacetime emergency is going to be going away in the, in the near future, say, September, I don't know that we have an ability to have staff or Commissioners to be continuing the remote option. Though CAO is still looking at this, and I specifically asked them to look at legal support for continuing an option for remote participation by members of the public. And so that is something that they had some questions about, CAO. And so I am hopeful that, that there is some sort of flexibility there to, to allow for that, to go forward. So stay tuned on that point. And those are the two things I wanted to, to mention, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Luis. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, is the zoning committee, Commissioner Baker? Or are you giving the report this morning, Commissioner Baker, or is it someone else?
I am, but I think Commissioner Grill had her hand up for Director Pareda.
Commissioner Grill.
I did, I just was wondering, I know you mentioned September, you know, there were a couple of dates in passing there. Do we have a timeline on when we think the Planning Commission might be moving back to in-person meetings?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Grill, at this point, we can tentatively, let's assume that our first meeting in September would be in person. I did also hear that the basement of City Hall, where we usually meet, the courthouse building, is no longer going to be utilized after June thirtieth by the county. So that would be, in theory, available for us, and Sonia has gone ahead and booked every other Friday for our meetings for the fall. And so unless we hear otherwise, I think we can assume that the first meeting in September would be, would be that first date.
Thank you, that, that was my only question.
Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. The upcoming site plan review meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June fifteenth, with two items. Six nine five Grand Avenue, a new mixed-use development, and twenty sixty-three and twenty sixty-nine Marshall Avenue, which is also a new mixed-use development. The upcoming zoning committee meeting scheduled for June seventeenth has been canceled, so there is no meeting. We had two items at our last zoning committee meeting. The first is five twenty Payne Avenue. This is a rezoning from I one light industrial to T two traditional neighborhood. This is mainly, this has been mainly a vacant lot, and the applicant is proposing a multifamily development on the property. A portion of the units will be at sixty percent AMI, the area median income, and the rest at fair market rate. The applicant highlighted that he met multiple times with neighbors in the area to discuss the project design and timeline. Staff found that all findings for this application were met, and the Payne failing Community Council submitted a letter for approval of the project. There was no one who spoke in favor, and two people who spoke in opposition of this application. Just to highlight that those that spoke in opposition of, and we can have Mr. Dermody provide more context if there are any questions. But I think one was around stormwater runoff or drainage and maybe parking, but the, Mr. Dermity provided clarity and information for those issues. There were no letters of support, and however, there were two letters in opposition. After discussion, the zoning committee voted five oh in favor to rezone five twenty Payne Avenue from I one light industrial to T two traditional neighborhood.
Commissioner Baker, any questions about the zoning committee? CNN, Sonia, can we get a roll call on the five twenty Payne rezoning?
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grill.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McMurtry.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Mr. Riley. Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Taggaya.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so that, that motion carries.
Thanks, Chair. The last item we had at zoning committee was sixteen forty-eight Bush Avenue. This was an application for non-conforming use as a duplex with reduced parking. The property existed as a duplex prior to nineteen seventy-one and was a legally non-conforming use from nineteen seventy-five through two thousand nine. A previous owner, which I feel like is important for this application, a previous owner wanted to use the building as a duplex and applied to the Planning Commission in twenty ten to do so. The application was denied, though the illegal use has been noted in the years since. The property has continued to be used as a duplex. So fast forward, the current owner is attempting to sell the property. It did switch hands. The current owner is, owner is attempting to sell the property and is applying for the appropriate permit to sell it as a duplex. Staff found that all findings and guidelines were met for the application. No one spoke in favor or in opposition of this application during the public hearing. There were no letters in support and one letter in opposition of the application. The District Council had not submitted a letter of recommendation for this application at the time of the zoning committee meeting. There was discussion among committee members, and ultimately, the zoning committee voted five oh in favor to approve the reestablishment of non-conforming use as a duplex with reduced parking at sixteen forty-eight Bush Avenue with the following condition, that the applicant shall obtain a code compliance inspection and any necessary permits, and bring the entire structure into building and fire code compliance within six months.
Any questions for the motion coming out of committee to approve the reestablish of non-conforming use in sixteen forty-eight Bush? CNN, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Grill.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McMurtry.
Yes.
Mr. Said.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Taggaya.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Katner.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Unanimous.
That motion for a reestablish of non-conforming use in sixteen forty-eight Bush is approved. And I believe that concludes your updates, is that correct, Commissioner Baker?
That is correct, Chair, that completes the report out.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, is the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee, Commissioner Grill.
All right, so the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee met this week on Wednesday, and we covered the parking study, which will be coming to the full Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth. Our next meeting is on June twenty-third, and we don't have an item on the agenda. And then our main event for today is the study of proposed amendments to the open space lot specific standards for the Ford zoning, Ford site zoning and public realm master plan. Menica, Mohan, and I believe Tia Anderson are also, are both here, and Menica has a presentation planned. And I will also note, I think there was a lot of confusion when we were going through this. The first time around, at least was for me, the difference between the open space and the open space that we're talking about today, which is sort of the private amenity space on the individual properties, and open space like parks. And I believe that staff will address this in their presentation, but I just think it's a good thing to go into it in your mind. And with that, I will kick it to Menica.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill, through the chair. Give me a moment here to... Can you all see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Does it look as a full screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And can you see my mouse if I'm moving on it or no?
No.
Okay, I will try to do my best then. So again, Commissioners, my name is Menica, I am a planner here at PD, and this is a study of proposed amendments to the lot coverage by open space standards for the Ford site zoning and public realm master plan. This is just a brief history of the plan. It was adopted in twenty seventeen after a decade of work by the city that worked with, closely with Ford. It has a unique zoning code known as the F district, so different than the Ts. And it has an accompanying master plan document. I will refer to it as the Ford MP, just because Ford site zoning public realm master plan is a lot to say. In June twenty eighteen, Ryan Companies was selected as the master developer of the site by Ford Motor Companies. Since twenty eighteen, the Ford master plan has been amended three times since it was adopted, twice initiated by Ryan, and once by the city to include design standards, which are incorporated directly into the Ford master plan and are in Chapter Five. One thing I think is important to note is that the Ford master plan always anticipated amendments after a master developer would be selected to sort of amend the plan and the zoning code as the site developed or the site was proposed. And then just in this year, in April twenty twenty-one, there was a City Council resolution asking the Planning Commission to study the specific lot coverage by open space standard. So what is the intent of the lot coverage by open space standard? There was, my understanding is that there was concern during the public engagement process, during the Ford MP process about the potential for very, for large massing and high heights of the building on the site. So the lot coverage by open space is thought to address that concern by creating undeveloped areas, spaces like between the buildings. So the open space term, again, as it pertains to private lots in the master plan is defined as areas covered by landscape materials, gardens, walkways, patios, recreation facilities, or play areas. And just to note on that definition, it's very broad, and that will come into play a little bit later, but I just wanted to note that. And as Commissioner Grill mentioned, this has nothing to do with Chapter Eight, the parks and open space. There are no proposed amendments in this study to Chapter Eight, and it would not impact the publicly owned parks, the city parks that were recently named, or any of the privately owned public, open spaces that were dedicated to the city via flat, and those private open spaces are kind of known as the civic area and the central stormwater feature. And just to be super clear with this graphic, we are talking, on the left side here is a random sort of private development lot. That green area that's surrounding it, that is what the lot coverage by open space standard is trying to address. It does not have anything to do with the publicly accessible parks and open spaces.
Menica, this is Tia. Your screen does not appear to be refreshing.
Hmm.
You're still on the brief history slide.
All right. Thank you for interrupting me. Is it, is it doing now?
It, it did, yes, sorry, I should have recognized that earlier.
Thanks, guys, I also can't see the chat, so. All right, so this is an image of the Ford site itself, it's provided to a spy Ryan Companies. And I, I can't see my pointer, but if you're following along with me, the central water feature here, that is a privately accessible open space. So all of the like trees and the greenery around this like open space feature, that is publicly accessible. But if you look at the townhomes that are abutting the site, there are trees on that front setback, that's private open space. And then if you look at the rooftop, that is also private open space, and that is what the standard is trying to address. The other thing that was in the plan is a green roof incentive. So there is incentive in the plan that you could meet up to fifty percent of this lot coverage requirement. And generally, it's a twenty-five percent requirement. If you had amenity space, so amenity space includes generally things like decks and patios adjacent to the green roof. And I'm going to read this definition, and then I'm going to sort of talk about some of the problematic things. And I think Tia will also sort of talk through how this has been sort of really challenging for staff to implement. So this reads as green roof as open space. So where a rooftop surface includes functional green roof area, visible from the public right of way, below the third floor, adjacent open air, open air outdoor space intended for use by building occupants or other persons, that does not meet the definition of functional green roof area, such as patio or deck, is eligible to meet up to fifty percent of the open space requirements of the property as measured in gross gravity of usable open space. Can everyone still, Tia, can people still see the slide?
No, no, I cannot, Menica.
I, I, at Menica, it, it did, it did.
Okay.
It did advance for me.
Um, Commissioner, maybe try to refresh the scenes. Can other people see? It should say green roof incentive now on the slide.
Yes, this is Commissioner Grill, I can see the green roof incentive slide.
Great, thank you. So the current issues with the incentive and the definition are sort of exemplified in this image. So if you look at the bottom of the image, there is that sort of light or green area, and this is a random building, not a Ford site building that Mike Richardson put together. That is what that lot coverage by open space was trying to address. And if you look at the inside of the building, that dark green, that is like the, the green roof area. So let's say that's the green roof area, and then that beige area would be the amenity space next to it. And so the idea behind the regulation is that you could meet up to half of your lot coverage by open space requirement on your rooftop, if you, if you had a green roof and adjacent to it was amenity space. So there's a lot of challenges in the way that's defined. One of the issues is the term adjacent, that has a specific definition in the code that doesn't really always fit this image. There's also not a clear nexus in massing. So like if the idea behind the regulation was that we're concerned about really large buildings, there's not like a clear nexus between trying to incentivize the green roof and that amenity space. So there's just like a lot of challenges with, with how it's written and, and how to implement it. So based on that, when we got the first project done on the Ford site, and because the definition of open space is so broad, and again, it's areas covered by landscape materials, gardens, walkways, patios, recreation facilities, or play areas, anything that met that definition counted towards that open space for lot coverage requirement. So it didn't matter where it was in the building. It could be on that ground level, that light green, it could be amenity space, it could be the green roof, all of it counted a hundred percent towards that requirement. And what we have found is that like this particular standard, the lot coverage by open space standard, is, is kind of, is unnecessary, and it causes a lot of confusion, one with the term, and it's very complex to implement. And if the concern around the original regulation was the massing and the size and the space in between the buildings, there are several, several regulations that are specific to the Ford site that already address this concern. And I'm not going to go through all of them, they're all listed here, and they're also in the staff report. But two of the ones that I think are pretty important, and you know, Tia can comment on them as well, is the one that we have design standards. And the design standards, as I talked about, talked about earlier, incorporated right into the Ford master plan in Chapter Five. And they really like regulate that space between a private development lot and a public space. So the street or a, a, a public park. It, they say what kind of materials you can use on the building, what kind of fencing you can use, sort of to create that space. We also have a lot coverage percentage for all of the buildings on the Ford site. Lot coverage is defined specifically in the code. So it is the part or percent of the lot occupied by the above grade portion of the building. So that is a zoning code definition. T districts don't have lot coverage, so the lot coverage again is if you have a lot, and then you have a building within the lot, it's that footprint that takes up, the above grade footprint that takes up the lot. We also have setback requirements, so there are setback requirements for every F district, ranging from five feet to ten, to ten feet, depending on the district. And then there are additional landscape requirements on the Ford site as well. So what are we proposing? So the amendments we're proposing to study is to remove the term open space from the master plan as it pertains only to privately owned development parks. And we would also remove the definition of green roof areas as open space. Again, this would not impact any of the publicly dedicated parkland or any of the publicly accessible privately maintained open space. We'd also add the definition of lot coverage from the code directly into the plan. So again, that's the part or percent of the lot occupied by the above grade portion of the building. We would also add a new incentive for green roof areas. And basically, what we're doing here is providing a small lot coverage bonus if you provide a green roof. So like tying the incentive directly to the green roof. So again, a building that provides a functional green roof area that faces the right of way, so instead of visible faces, the right of way civic area, central stormwater feature, and or city parks, as specified in the Ford master plan, can receive a one percent lot coverage bonus for every one percent of functional green roof provided. And we would cap that at a ten percent lot coverage bonus, so that means for the Ford site overall, no building would exceed eighty percent unless they applied for a variance. The other thing that Tia brought to my attention, and I think this is a really good thing that she noticed, is just slight tweaks to the definition of functional green roof area. This is an image from the master plan, and in the definition, we have the word surface of a building or which is surfaced with soil. And if you actually look at this image that's directly in the, in the plan, this green roof doesn't actually touch the roof, and it, it doesn't look like it meets this definition of surface with soil. But we would want that to, to be included, so we just simply got rid of which is surfaced, because we already have this part that says open to the sky and air and a top of roof. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tia to just to walk through one example that I think kind of exemplifies all of the challenges we had with this definition. It had, it had all of it, it had the grid issues, it was on duos, and it, it had a lot of things. And, and the building itself is actually very lovely, so I think this sort of demonstrates, I think the zoning gymnastics, I would, I would call it, that staff had to like figure out and, and why we came up with this.
Yes, good morning, everybody, thank you, Menica. I, I like the term zoning gymnastics, that's not one I have heard, but that is definitely a lot of what my day job is as coordinating site plan review for the city. And so, yeah, so there's two recent developments that were approved within the Highland Bridge site for Presbyterian Homes, blocks six and block seven. And the rendering that you're looking at here is a view into block seven, which on the other side of this building is the Civic Plaza. And, you know, both of these buildings, much like other parts of the Highland Bridge site, And, you know, both of these buildings, much like other parts of the Highland Bridge site, are struggling to, to fit their building in when it comes to the grade of the site, particularly on these western blocks, there's a lot of slope. And that just makes things particularly challenging at, at times to, to kind of figure out how to, with, with floor levels and, and the like, how to fit everything in together. And so this particular block seven, what's kind of hard to see from, from this vantage point is that where the building has that C cutout, up above that, behind that parapet that is at the first floor, there is an amenity deck area with a green roof integrated into it. And so this particular building, there is, there was about 22% of the lot area that around the building footprint, both within this cutout area and around the perimeter, was allocated to what we considered open space lot coverage. And then as, as Medica said, based on our zoning administrator interpretation, which really looked very broadly at all area, opens, the open space definition and how all areas that contribute to that landscaping, patios, walkways, recreational areas, et cetera, count towards open space. The, about, it was about 2% of the area and about 6%, excuse me, about 2% of the area is green roof behind that parapet on, just above the first floor, and about 6% of the area is other open amenity space. And so in totality, this particular block seven building met the open space lot coverage requirement of 25%. They also met the building lot coverage requirement, which is 70%, but I'll note just barely. So what, at least to my eye, appears to be a very open, breathable kind of building massing, this is just, this is, I think it was 69.9% building lot coverage at the end of the day. And, you know, we were honestly, part of that zoning gymnastics, we were honestly looking at every little bay window, every little roof deck on making sure that we were staying within that 70% building lot coverage. And as, is being proposed here today to remove the open space lot coverage requirement and to provide that bonus for green roof, this is a project that may have benefited from that, if there were a green roof incentive bonus, that, you know, for that 2% green roof, if that would have allowed for 2% more of building lot coverage, certainly it would have cut down on the zoning gymnastics and would have just given us all a little bit more breathing room in terms of making sure that the building lot coverage was in compliance if, if they were allowed to, to have up to 72% building lot coverage in this particular example. We don't have a visual here this morning, I don't believe, but block six across the street, it too met the building lot coverage and the open space lot coverage requirement. That particular building was dealing with even greater slopes. And actually, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for areas with parking, below grade parking, where the below grade parking extends above the, the, above grade. And there's an amenity deck on top of that, then that area of the building does not count towards building lot coverage. And that's actually part of the zoning code. And so, you know, that was an area too on block six where we were really trying to figure out how to coordinate all of these components of open space, lot coverage and building lot coverage, the floor area ratio, of course, where off-street parking areas do not count towards that. And so it's, it's a lot to try to fit together. And at the end of the day, these, these couple of projects made it work, but to have the flexibility, particularly with that green roof bonus, would be an added value. Anything else, Medica?
No, that's all I, that's all I got, yeah. And so then just, thank you so much, Tia. And then we met with the Complan Committee on June 2nd, and they afforded the attached resolution to the Planning Commission for the meeting today and to release for a public hearing for these amendments to the master plan and to the accompanying F district for a hearing on July 23rd, 2021. So that is the action that we're asking the Planning Commission today. And that's, that's it. So Tia and I are happy to take questions from Commissioner.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson and Ms. Mohan? Mr. Taggia?
Sure, just a quick question. Why was 10% chosen as the, as the cap?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, we did this exercise on all of the, the buildings that have been submitted so far. And internally with staff, the first building that came in was the Lunds project. And that, that asked for a variance and covered 90% of the lot. And that felt like, that project should always ask for a variance. That's kind of what it felt like for us as staff. Like that's a very large building. But 80% felt like enough of a, a bonus that it, we wouldn't be covering the entire lot. I also think, you know, like that, that's a number that we kind of picked by looking at different projects. I, I think we could do something based on what we hear in the public hearing, 5%, but that, that's how we kind of came up with the 10%. We didn't want to go to 90%, but we wanted to also provide enough of an incentive for the projects to keep providing a green roof.
Thank you.
I'll just weigh in on that as well. Medica, I don't know in the slide that you had where it had all of the other regulations that contribute. There is a stormwater, oh, yep, just go back. There we go, stormwater regulation where because of the, the stormwater utility, each parcel area from a stormwater perspective is limited to the amount of impervious area that can be allowed by our watershed district partners and then Public Works Sewers as well looks at that. And so we wouldn't want to have something too high of a bonus where then it would conflict with that stormwater regulation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mancy Anderson or Ms. Mohan? I, I have one. How does this relate the 80% compared to other zoning in the city? So like compared to a T3 or the RM2 that was recently redone? What, what are the maximums that are allowed at those type of zoning?
I, I was going to have Tia take it. I, I don't believe there are lot coverage regulations for the T districts.
Let me just double check here while we're, while we're talking. I should have had the...
Actually, now that, now that you say it, I do think the RM2 is based on...
Based on FAR.
It is. It's based on FAR. The lot coverage... Yeah, I don't...
And Ford also has FAR. So the, the F districts also have FAR in addition to lot coverage. So I believe, I don't know, spending director, career is on, but I believe the T districts and the RM just do FAR.
Correct. It is just FAR. The, the maximum lot coverage is for our, essentially our single family residential zoning districts, R1 to R4. And I will just note, even in the F districts, the amount of building lot coverage does vary based on the F district. So the F1 district, for example, which is the River Residential, which where we would expect to find more cust, more single family homes or custom multifamily homes, the max lot coverage there is 40%, which is more in line with our single family residential zoning districts and the R districts. And then as you get into the more mixed use commercial F districts, you know, your F4, 5 and 6, that's where we have a building lot coverage requirement maximum of 70%. But we don't have that building lot coverage requirement in our T districts or in our multifamily residential zoning districts.
And I see our colleagues have chimed in in the chat too. So if you want to read more code, it's all there for you in that.
Any additional questions? Otherwise, Commissioner Grill, would you like to make the motion? Commissioner Holt?
So the only other thing that one comment on is that during committee meeting, Matt Tal and... Not only the green roof, maybe be an option to include your lot coverage ratio, but something around solar as an additional option for businesses to increase their lot coverage area, maybe on places higher than three stories or something like that. So just, I think we should keep that in mind a little bit.
Yeah, and I think it's during the public comment period. I don't, I don't know if Commissioner Holt's got a little gurgle for the rest of you. It was a little gurgle for me, but I, because I was at the commission meeting or the committee meeting, I know what he was trying to say. So basically, he was asking if, if staff would consider a potential solar bonus, so if you provided solar panels or solar, could you also be considered for a lot coverage bonus? Right now in the master plan, there are solar ready requirements for rooftops. So rooftops have to be solar ready as part of the master plan. And staff had said we would, we would consider how potentially providing solar could lead to a lot coverage bonus. I think, I think we would want to do some more work at looking at potentially other codes, but then also thinking, thinking about that green area, sort of, if you're providing more green on a building, like, you know, the idea behind that is you're providing more greens, then maybe you can take up more of the space. So I think like, that's something that we want to consider too. But I think during the public comment period, we can certainly address that.
Thank you. Good summary.
All right, so this is Commissioner Grill. I would move that the Planning Commission initiate a zoning study to consider zoning code amendments corresponding to proposed amendments to the Ford site zoning and public realm master plan.
Motion by Commissioner Grill, is there a second?
Second, Naeda, Commissioner Naeda Presley.
Right, motion made by Commissioner Grill, seconded by Commissioner Presley. Is there any additional question on the motion? Unanimated, can we get a roll call?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Katner?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggia?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Chair Rangel Morales?
I guess.
Here? Can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous.
All right, so that study will be initiated. Anything else, Commissioner Grill?
Nothing else.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Transportation Committee. I believe Commissioner Rizberg was gone. Mr. Dermody, will you be doing the updater with, with the Commissioner Said?
Chair, that would be me, Commissioner Said.
All right, Commissioner Said.
Thank you, Chair. Our next meeting is Monday, June 14th, and we have two items. First one is bike lane implementation on Water Street, Fillmore Avenue and St. Paul Avenue. And the second one is Belham Backway improvement. I believe those, just those two items. That's all I have here.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Said. Any questions for the Transportation Committee? Moving on to Communications and Nominations, I believe Commissioner Underwood has gone. Luis, is there any updates?
A, a couple here. We are going to probably get a meeting together of the Communications Nominations Committee, which is a couple of members down. It used to be at four and now we're at two. So quickly, a brief commercial about the Communications Nominations Committee, especially for those who are new to the commission. This, this is a committee that, you know, while really important, also meets a little bit less frequently than the other committees. The tasks are, when we have upcoming vacancies on the commission, we review applicants and advise staff in the mayor's office on, on, you know, good candidates to consider for the vacancies. So that's one piece that picks up later in the year as we get into the fall. But during the rest of the year, you know, we're reviewing annual report. We are, in early in the year, we are assisting staff with various opportunities to engage the community outside of Planning Commission meetings and official kind of staff initiated meetings. So a couple items that have come up of interest at the CNPC, just an interest in something suggested by Commissioner Mitchell, to looking at additional ways to engage a variety of other populations that are, you know, less, less traditionally engaged through our processes like district councils and business associations, to, to brainstorm on that subject and offer some additional thoughts to staff. And then the other one that's sort of related, we've been in, Yaya Diatta and I, the zoning administrator, have been in touch with Kat Beltman, who's our district council coordinator. She has a little group of, of district council folks who are wanting a, probably a couple of training sessions, mostly in the zoning space, but probably more broadly to, that they've given us some feedback on some previous trainings that we've done and kind of, you know, what would be helpful and, you know, what level of detail and things like that and what's missing. And so I think probably at some point engaging our Communications Nominations Committee with, with those materials to get another lens from a commissioner perspective would be, would be helpful. So I haven't talked to you, Yaya, about that, but I was thinking that would be a, a helpful group to go to as we update our workshops and training materials. So we, we have to set a date for that, for that meeting. And if, if there are commissioners interested in learning more or talking more about serving on the Communications Nominations Committee, please let me know if you're interested and, and/or the chair, Commissioner Underwood, and we can give you more information. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Luis. Next item on the agenda is Task Force on the East End Report. Commissioner Grill?
This is Commissioner Grill. The Riverview Station area planning task force met on Tuesday night, and it's only our second meeting, so it's still a lot of background information and general information. So as we get deeper into specific topics, I'll have more items to, to bring back to the group. I do have one item. There will be a virtual open house about the Riverview Corridor on Wednesday, June 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be a Zoom meeting, and you can register online at riverviewcorridor.com. And it will provide background information, a recap of the process to date, go through some of the project goals and objectives, and then provide a high level overview of the current corridor conditions. And the public is invited to provide feedback and identify issues that should be taken into consideration. So I would suggest that anyone that has interest in Riverview, attend that meeting. And then again, you can register online at riverviewcorridor.com. And if you need more information, also feel free to contact me. There is also information, I believe, on the county website. There is information on the Ramsey County website under Riverview Corridor that has more information on this and a video about modern streetcars and route maps and fact sheets. Our next meeting for the task force is July, and I believe it is late July. Uh, our next meeting for the task force, uh, is July, and I believe it is late July on the, uh, 13th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that is another Zoom meeting and the public is welcome to attend. And that is the update for Riverview.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Grill? All right. Moving on, Mr. Dermody, will you be presenting on Hillcrest or is there no update?
Chair is, uh.
Oh, go ahead. I didn't see you, Bill.
Yeah, I, I just popped back in. Uh, Chair Commissioners, there is a Hillcrest Community Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday evening. And the main, uh, item on the agenda is a draft sustainability chapter for the forthcoming master plan. Anyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you, Bill. Um, moving on to old business, new business, or anything that somebody would like to add to the agenda for the next Planning Commission meeting? All right. So then that will conclude the June 11th, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining, and I hope you have a safe weekend. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.